We have a time limit for Mr. Neighbors.
I told them to arrive ten minutes after.
Okay, is there a time limit for us for how long you wanted us to talk about it?
Um, I think it's at your your discretion.
Okay.
What you feel is appropriate for uh for review of the property.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it would be at your discretion, Chair.
Okay.
We do have a quorum and I'm waiting for Red if he comes on online. I'm I'm hope you didn't get confused between. Yeah.
Right, yeah. They do, it it's like one will come in and then it's like an empty message comes into, yeah, I don't know what. Yeah.
And where it says on previous available, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, uh, it's like an empty, yeah.
Hey, John.
Just trying to figure out what that was, oh.
Yeah, I don't know.
It says I'll bow out tonight, but I think he was talking about things.
The meeting.
He said and then there were two.
Uh, like two uh, two committee members.
So I think that's what he was.
Did uh, so is Alex assigned as our council member?
We haven't had enough, an appointment yet. But I I note that he is our temporarily liaison.
Um, have, where are they in that process? I mean, that I feel like that's been a couple of months now.
They've been talking of, oh, this is a perfect review of ARB. Do you want to start the meeting, I guess?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm discussing business. Let me not get us in trouble.
Um, I called to order the Scottsville ARB meeting for uh Thursday, June first. Um, we have a quorum, so we'll go ahead and move forward. Um. Is there anything, there's something I'd like to add to the agenda and uh is there anything that you all would like to add?
Uh, I think I've handed it out enough appointments for the past couple of months, so I'm okay.
Okay, um, it seems like we should add this conversation of of uh who is our town council liaison.
Yes.
Yeah.
You want to add that to new business?
Yes, and old business, I want to add the Valero.
Okay.
Uh lighting. Uh, new business.
No, uh, uh, I think you shared that after I published the agenda, so I can add it quickly.
Yeah. Um. We, do we come? We don't have a field building on here.
Yeah, well, I was gonna give an update quickly just on something we want to work on next month for COA.
Okay.
If you're talking about a.
Okay.
Uh, five B.
Okay.
You know, the door or something.
Oh, that door shut. I was thinking that door's open and it's like, oh, close the door down, like, no, no.
And so, uh, and then the Montessori school, is that for next?
Five B, yes.
Okay. Okay, great. Um, so can I have a motion to agree to the updated agenda?
I've moved to uh approve the uh, aforementioned agenda with the additional changes.
Okay, great. All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Um, and then can I have a motion to approve the past?
I'll make a motion to approve the best possible assembly as needed.
I, I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great, thank you. All right. Uh, matters from the public.
Thank you.
All right, old business. Morris Hill Road, Javier, do you want to speak to where we are with that?
Yeah, so uh, I'm following up on correspondence we had with the ARB and with staff members, including um our attorney. Um, what we've attached is the letter that we sent out to a uh community member of the historic overlay district. Um. The letter is carefully determined in that we have to be careful about our determination of four condition houses within the historic overlay. Um, we are looking at a criteria being visible from a public street. Um, and what we, what happened was we had three properties on uh Morris Hill, which was, I think, one oh five and one fifteen Morris Hill. Um, we went up Valley and Hardware to look at it from both public streets. So a careful distinction for ARB for our next inventory is to um use public streets for our survey, um, what January, December is when we start.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and be careful about that. I've uh, I suggest the uh board looks over the letter and review it a little bit. Um. We verified that it wasn't visible from our hardware street, so we can uh, they can disregard this notice. But they're still within the um historic district and general provisions still kind of apply to everything within our district. Um, I've left a note in our inventory for these properties, so that uh whoever's we send out to field these, we have a reminder, so we don't forget in six months. Um, and then I think a useful thing would be to have a conversation um about any other sites that you might want staff to walk out and review. We took photos of these uh last week and double-checked before we wrote this letter and confirmed uh their status and the overlay, so we could do some staff work and follow up on other properties.
Okay.
Oh, uh, I would like, uh, we had a few properties during our inventory uh that we had had questions on. Uh, I don't have the actual addresses on me, but uh three of them were on the east side of town, but sorry, all four were on the east side of town. One is above the uh laundromat, uh far up, and it is not very easily visible from the road, so you could not make any determinations about the property. And then the other three would be uh what we believe are going to be considered a private road as well, but we would like to have that investigated.
So staff could do the same we did before, check on old maps, look at what public roads are, double-check with our attorney and staff members, and then if if we have the same situation, we'll take photos either way, we'll leave a note for the next inventory, so we can kind of pin up.
Great.
And then I think before our next inventory, we could have a conversation about how we want to continue next inventory with pop properties that are on private roads, but within our overlay district. Staff could do some follow-up on that and then we discuss it as a board.
Yeah, I think the the most pertinent question in relation to what Josh is saying, talking about is is that road public? Because it it does feel like a driveway.
Right.
So, and we weren't even clear as we were walking up and if if, you know, if we should be going up there, so.
And I.
No, no, go ahead.
I think I know the road, so we'll go into GIS and old maps.
Okay.
That's what we did with this last uh War Hill.
Right.
So it it would be the same application and just same process and we'll we'll be able to get back to you with an answer.
That's wonderful, thank you.
Great, thanks Javier. Okay, any other questions regarding the inventory and Morris Hill?
Thank you.
Thank you guys. Um. Okay, Valero, where are we with the lighting?
The response I got was the imaging company is working on a solution for what you all are calling light bleed off the lot. I'll be back with you once I hear about it from them, so.
Okay. So Becky, that's, yeah, that's a great example of a um a condition just to keep tabs on each month, see where they are, and check in with the owner to make sure that it's still on their radar. That's great, thank you. Okay, new business, uh, the COA process.
So maybe just a conversation, made it vague enough to have a conversation about how we want to approach COAs and the architectural reboard with new staff. Um, I think uh, the board has been clear with, or two members have been clear with me that um sending out agendas a little bit earlier um in communication with staff, engaging that will be helpful for answers on COAs and anything that comes through our agenda here. Um, and then I think, uh, let's see. And then additionally, um you just mentioned it, uh, staff will continue to try to follow up and build a rapport with property owners and then checking in on progress on COAs, because you do the approval and then we have to follow up and make sure that they're adhering to our certificates of programs.
Great, so um what we spoke about, just so we have it on record now, I think this this is an appropriate time, um is that you all will send the agenda a week beforehand, and then we'll have about a week to prepare for it by like if on the agenda, hi, Mr. Neighbors.
Right, it's seven thirty, actually it's seven o'clock.
It's okay. Good, good timing. Um. So, uh, we, you know, if if the COA is in regards to like a new chance or a paint color, then we have time to look at the guidelines before the meeting, because one of the things that made it so easy previously was that Matt was able to say, yes, this was our guideline, these are our guidelines. But now that we don't have that, we just need to take the initiative to do the work before the meeting in order to kind of review what what the guidelines are. So that hopefully we can come in and just make a decision. Okay, um, great, thank you Javier. Would you like, Mr., where, see, okay, upcoming COA for fifteen twenty-five, Stoney Point Road. Yeah, let's see, where would you like Mr. Neighbors to be within this agenda?
Six A.
Six A, okay, that's what she said, sorry.
Would you want to move him?
Uh.
And then we have five C also. Council.
Yes. Can we move Mr. Neighbors up since he's in attendance?
Yes, of course, at your discretion.
You are? I don't see any reason we can't, um. Yeah. How are you? Good to see you. Yeah, yeah, well, those are no longer my purview. No, well, um, if they were in my purview, I would have. Mr. Neighbors was an incredible um contributor to the scanned public art exhibitions and offered his windows and also had his own art, which is incredible, but he won't sell, even though many, many people want this work. But he is an incredible artist in his own right, yeah, and an incredible community member. So, uh, would you want to update us on where you are?
Yeah, I, I, I answered the question, just a few words, say, yes, we're working and um then that, you know, all that, but you know, it's a lot of words to it, so.
Right.
And you know, this is the building, you're, you're.
Apparently when you hit slideshow and those ten, that kind of. That's the first uh photo.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, yeah. First I'd like to talk about this station.
Yeah, absolutely.
People, they don't know that, he's a. Well, what I'd like to talk about, you know, obviously, you know, we we kind of see things maybe a little bit different there, you know? Not that whole, but you can see the sand is in the building. Before we begin. We can see the sand, you notice, they need it somewhere. And so, you're paying again, sort of again, it's now a little bit, we're here now, when it's, when it's uh, we got some apples there, a license sign over there. And we can work on everything and you can see, and so we we like to say that the building can tell us what to do, see my thing, what we did. And the builder says, we need to maybe some extra water down. Or some people there will say, uh, I'm not trying to make a buck here, gonna make it anyway. But if you just take the building and follow along some of the things that it's asking you to do, then you begin and work at this. And then, and you know, it takes time to do that, and you pay a lot. So we just get started, and so, then you can see over here, this component, you can pick on this process. The building is, so I'm the, not a good.
I think that's it. We only have essentially two active items, then I swear directly.
Then we began to build the uh the, the other fault. And then, and all of that, so it goes on and on and on and.
Next, no, finish that.
So I just shit my throat. Yes. It's always like that.
We wanted it to have strong quality, so it was a good example. But in some of the paintings. This is what I wanted. Just for your show, what did we get? So, so, rather than just legal, shit there, all of that in the first box too. We should have that a little bit, so that's why the work looked like, well, somebody, water that's falling out, it was falling out. That's what buildings, they can get into fire, so the brick on the outside. It's a little bit of water, so that you're, that whole massage for the uniform. Take some delicious, but it was.
You, is there any, um, are there any issues with like water or fronts? If you remove the, if what if water gets in there and then it feeds it and it stays on?
Well, if it gets in there and stayed there, uh, maybe in, probably for the music, do something like that.
Okay.
If any, it's in the water in December. So what we had to process now, we want to finish up. So finishes again, uh, getting all the windows and doors there, and then we'll come back again to all the same, you know, yeah. For example, the, the, the building is well, you know, there's two entrance doors, because we're making, and the door could that could be a time, we're making like this, so we had to, good finding this sound, here, here, we work in this one. And we went through all the way out housing there. You know, around the time. And then they did this, B, which is on this. We, we take a long, we plan it down to the figures, and each one is clear, but but each one has to be like reserved, so we put like a, a tree, that's why this one is, man, this one is putting together, one against it, that's like your problem, one thing, and then it will rock that, you mean, and so, so so that's why we have just this part, the rhymes and the deal. And we have four of these, now these are made in that same building, we made them there, which comes back, well, we've been working fifty, sixty years, the office, and these are windows. You know, a few of the windows are in very, very grand shape, uh, in this better style. So each member, you know, is, is made this, yeah, machines in there, we make those. So it's a business.
But you're, you're making it all together by hand. Like you're not buying those, you're going to your point. Because of the, 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 and.
You can see, you know, a lot of that, the president's screws for nails, your usual lip aids. You got, got two there. Back, you can see, uh, these are the these are the jams, so that's, that go, we're going in here, that's the pay. They go together, uh, going across the front, right, is, we found one piece in the interior that was, that opened. So, you can take, uh, like, five boards and then cut it, just going to explain that to that shape. So that's a reading, can I, it's a little bit bigger, there's a tiny door. So that piece is maybe, yeah, my brother, it's cuter, the machine, these people there.
Mr. Neighbors, how many people do you have working on?
Well, now.
How many people do you have working on those things?
Or, at this particular time, it's down to my brother and myself, and the person it's down to, for all the massive stuff, who are going to use a lot of help. It's all past, you know, it's down to this technology stuff. This right, it's like, we just find itself, because uh, this will be, get to the point where everything is made, you can immediately see. Then we break out of the crew, but these are the, these are the, this is the lucky ball. Which I was not, I was there, and at that particular time, it was a special reason, we can't, you know. We, we wanted to do the possible, we could solve it. And so we make it up, we have a very good, you know. Make everything, so we do that. But yeah, there's a lot, you're buying, you may, and think of the boards. Mm-hmm, that, uh, we take a little wrong one.
The tummy groove?
Yeah.
So you are fabricating these yourself?
Everything, windows, the doors, the chairs, everything is made in this building, and here's what we decided, there you go. So it's nice, sort of flat, it's gonna take a little long. Yeah, you know. You know. As you can see. You can see, uh statue there, they're put together, at the age, these made, they're put together. And those are the next, uh, thing I'm, that's. They were put together, we have a machine, we got to cut out a glass.
Oh, wow.
That's another thing, yeah. Well, plastic window, or something out there, as you say, well, to get it hard back, so at every particular time, buildings, you know, glass, one sixteen division. So what we done, we've gone to one eight division, we get to that, all that glass, you guys, yeah. And then.
Mm-hmm.
There, um, it's made exactly the way we made, maybe like eighteen.
Yeah.
See what I said?
Yeah.
That's the machine, everybody was. Blazing in there, that's the, that's the way we start. You're working. Good, good. And you notice that the lumber, go back once, you notice how the lumber is very clear. There's a special lumber that I've selected uh throughout the years, and upon the third floor, we have a big archive, just all this lumber we've laid.
Hmm.
So the dry, as you can see, you can see where they are, it's been dry, and it's first day. Now, right here, you can see, uh, windows that we made. Like I said, we've been working for, we've been working throughout the years. And so we put them outside back in January, just to, it's, the windows are here already, they, these are the windows here.
Okay.
Yeah, that's that middle door jam. That's the jam we fabricated to go right here in place of the old one that's chariated.
Mm-hmm.
On the bar, we put that back in, and then two doors like that will go there. This set of windows will go here, these are already made, we're just breaking everything together.
So there's a jam.
There's another set of windows, and then this is the bay and this, uh, that's the jam. This is the way that, this is one of the, all the jams that we established some of.
That, that's really awesome that, you know, the way you have those jams, you're able to see exactly how they made the jams work, so that, yeah, that's awesome.
Next one. And, yeah, and there's another set of windows go here, like I said, he's already done it there. And then if you look at it from the side, you know, the museum is over there, here are the jams, here are the windows, jam. Next. Then on this side, we've got this, this set of windows to go here. I'm sorry, I'm just, that, that, they go up here. We haven't quite figured this out yet, this seems to be a window and then a section. Well, you don't quite know what to do with that one, yeah.
Yeah.
Wasn't something they did at that particular time, so it means we have to go back, do some more research, next. This, or here. And that's a side door that, when I, or moving in the background, that's what they had, you gotta take the time, that slides in, that moving this. As you see, this is the one, we're talking about, we don't quite take, take a good look at this one, we don't quite know what to do with that one, so any ideas, you know?
Right.
Quite makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's like a window, and then we've got a section here. But it's not something that was done just. Yeah, it's like a window, and then we've got a section here, but it's not something that was done just recently, though. This is just the beginning, I think. See, we're cleaning out all of the mortar there. That's the pictures in there that would show what's supposed to be in front of this building, but. Obviously, you got to, okay, this is back to making the, the doors inside. That's, that's right, that's, that's, that's one of the doors. This is a drawing. And this is a side drawing of the building. And then, this is a porch that was originally there. So we made a sketch of that in case it's gonna be done, there's some of these things, they're not planning on doing. Our job is to get it outside, get it outside the building, where it's like, ARV, food, all the windows. And then, somebody else takes it from there. Next. It's the handrail.
Speaking of that, Mr. Neighbors, what, do you have a, an idea of what you want the building to be?
Exactly.
The, or what you want it to have in it, once you're?
Yes, I, I know exactly, who I'm going to sell it to, I know exactly what I want in there. You know, that's just me, it's just like, oh, yeah, I want a hotel there, you know, when the building soul is gonna be a hotel. We have lots of people, we've got lots of ideas.
So what is your hope for this building?
Next, so this is the original building. They had this spot back there, and for some reason, that's the original porch. Now, for some reason, if you look, the ground level is here now, notice this, uh, this doorway. When I, when we bring up another picture, you see over, uh, the ground level is up here. I don't know how that happened, if the floods did that or what, but, but it's interesting to find out, so we'll, we'll come back to that. Okay, this is the front of the building and the porch that was originally there. We've done all the research and that's, that's what, what is gonna go there eventually. This is cleaning up the brick again. That's what I'm out there working on. Cleaning up the old loose mortar so we can get a good foundation in there, next. This is just where we have showing, John is showing how the old beams were cut. Grant here is, of course, but this should not show, we're working on windows. Next, tools that we use at that, uh, we don't, we don't quite use those now, too, but, but, you know, that's the tunes. This is, what I was telling you about all the lumber we got upstairs, that, uh. This may be almost twenty years old, but I purchased it, you know, by now, so it's nice and dry, next. This is how we take the mortar out, or a big tanneller, and put it, the humidifier, and that, suck all the water. Uh, this is a piece that, you know, when, when it, when it's that old, it's hard to work with. Can't get anything worse than we, we remake it, but exactly the same. Then we have a frame, or they would put it together and square it all, these little things, tighten it up. This is making the copper letter, and, you know, this is the beam that goes all the way through the building. It comes from the front to the back, and it actually projects out of the, becomes out of the gutter, the trust, you know, gutter, trough. That's one of the door jams. Uh, back there, this is, uh, that door we was telling you about. That it was down here, so now it's up here, so we have, so steel stone right here, that's standing open and set for, very, yeah. Windows again. This is the one window I believe, if we always keep open, because as you can see, we've got a little crane there, we bring stuff up the, up the hill there. So it, it's already made, it's just not for the end. Some of this stuff before we repair, but, this is just a picture of one, where it's, it's, yeah. Next, okay, here we go, you see now, this is that entrance that we were talking about. And on the drawing, it was down here, the terrace was down here, so what happened, you know, they did move up?
Right. Yeah, that's really interesting.
Yeah, it's, it's, you will miss the tweet, we haven't got that one yet, thanks. This is John, he makes everything now. Some of the old trains. Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I thought that these other could kind of talk about it, uh.
Absolutely.
So what is your hope for the building?
Well. We're going to do the building, the exterior, all the doors, the windows, everything, stuff like that. Then, gonna sell it to Sash. I remember George, George.
Good, good one?
They always talk about that, it kind of got lost, I guess, I miss you, but. It would be a nice building to have, at least the bottom. They have the second floor, the welcome center, or DMV one, we call it a DMV, the people.
Uh, DMV.
Then, if you can put some. Con, continental condos, uh, on the thirty. Low income, something like that, but all of this stuff relates back to, you know, friends. You know, this is a community fund, so whoever gets a building, have a welcome grant. With any whoever want, so this is where you build, stuff like that.
So, um, that was my first question, my second question is, I know. Two years ago, you put up lighting because you had some security issues?
Yes.
Has that been helpful?
Um, we haven't had any more issues.
Okay.
Those young kids have. You know, it's a proud building, yes, so, you know, any damage, we move that kind of building.
Yeah.
So here we made, we made it all.
Okay. And then, um, the last thing I just wanted to sort of. Make a comment about, uh, was, you know, I think in, like, in this day and age. We have a, uh, a kind of, um, expectation that. Building is gonna happen fast and efficiently, but as a result, often, it ends up being. Lower quality and, uh, and doesn't last forever. And I think there's something to be said, I know this is, you know, taking fifteen, twenty years. And I also really appreciate you coming and explaining the process to us and. The standards that you are holding you and your team to as far as craftsmanship is concerned. Because that is not, I don't think that that is, uh. That kind of craftsmanship is put into practice very often anymore. So I appreciate you coming and explaining that, and explaining that that takes time.
It takes time, and we can't be too concerned about, I gotta make it out, that make the buck, you know, there needs to be a way, you know. You can't do one with pain, it is, well, I got, there's money, what are you thinking?
Yeah.
So, so this, and then on top of that, you know, we, we want to suffer in the building, it's twenty, thirty years.
Your retirement.
Next, uh. I think, we're gonna probably, a good guess is that, and for three years, or less. We're gonna have all our windows and doors and stuff like that, and then, that's what we're gonna do, that can really be across the street, you know, and somebody to take it. But it, it takes, takes time, it's not, it's not a game, you know, I get, none of the people want, I didn't give it. And, a first question, you know, this, this is not a, a, a game, you know? You have to put more than just money in.
Right.
And if you're trying to make that huge, you know, and you said that, you're not gonna last, so you're not talking for a few years. So, so when it happens, though, it will, it will be, it has to be, a project has to be well thought out, you know. We don't need another big restaurant that is gonna kill their budgets. So we want, we need.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You want it to contribute to the community, yeah.
And so, so, I think, you know, it's so amazing, this is change.
Yeah, well, I appreciate you coming in and showing us the progress that you're moving forward, because even though it's moving slowly. You're still moving forward.
Oh, yes, yes, all this work has been done, you know, no one knows about it, you know, we've been, we've been working for the last. Two years straight on the, and then, uh, inside all those times, just put it outside, let it see them, you know. Even the ones that was cracked and broken, you know, everything, and, but, yeah, but it, it. It happens at a certain time. It's not, that's, that's.
Becky, be sure to tell the town council that.
Yeah, yeah, at least somewhere you could do, use some of the grants, we, on purpose, we will not accept any grants at all. We were offered some, just, you have to put back the windows, but no, no, we, we. And that way, it stays free, you know, and, so, so. It's got, you know. And, those are some of, and those are some of the things that you're working, uh, you know, it's just one or two things, at least a block, you know. But that's, we can go a little further with that.
Would you all have any questions for Mr. Neighbors?
No, I, you know, I wanna, or, say, I really appreciate the level of craftsmanship you bring to the table. Uh, you know, they're, what you do is classic work.
Get to that stage where we say, but, and it will be, it will be so, because, uh, you know, we've got this building on the bottom. For lots of people trying to figure out how to work it. But it's, it's not easy, it's not even, we're, we're not anxious, we're pretty, so one fan. And, and, and they, you know, that's, that's not a problem.
Yeah.
It, it has to be okay all in, and it will be, I believe, it issued, it does not, because I'm coming back to check it.
Well, Mr. Neighbors, thank you so much always for being in this community.
Thank you so much, you know.
Absolutely. Yeah, I'll be here to help you out.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Neighbors.
Really good to see you, I miss seeing you on a regular basis. No, you know that I would come to see you. Okay, um. Five B, upcoming COA for fifteen twenty-five Stoning Creek Road.
Yeah, so, I received a call from the, on, the suit-to-be Montessori. Um, they're looking to put in a, um. A ADA accessibility ramp, uh, so let me take a step back. So that building is, um, the old post office. So it's still set up in the way you would think of an old post office with a loading dock. Have to pull up the picture I had it, but what they're looking to do is to set up that loading dock to have a ramp for accessibility. And then fencing off the ramp itself, or the, uh, the loading area, that elevated space. Uh, for safety reasons, so, um.
It's now in shelf care?
It will be a Montessori, yeah. Yeah, so, as they work on what they need to do to set it up for a Montessori, they will, will need ARB input. On that ramp and those rails, so that feels similar to a previous COA we had this year with the Baptist Church.
I guess I'm kind of curious about it, I mean, I'm sure they know what they're doing, but. The front is on great, so I'm wondering why they need to put a ramp in the back.
I didn't ask when I got the phone call, but I'm curious now that you brought that up, I didn't consider that.
The other thing is that, that, that sort of. Length, uh, the back concrete chunk is at the height of a, a truck. So it's pretty high, so that slope is gonna be pretty steep.
And that was pretty much the reason why we didn't bring it, to go for it tonight, so that we could get more information on it.
Okay, so, so those are two things I would check in about, it sounds like, based on her. Interview with Nancy, it sounds like her dad or her husband is a contractor, so he obviously knows what he's doing. But those are two questions I have, is, number one, why do you need? A ramp there, and number two, is it going, i- is the slope going to be true for ADA accessibility?
Well, that's really appreciated from staff, so we can start working, answer those questions for the next meeting. So, uh, if we can make progress, we'll try to have that for July.
Okay, great.
Um, I lost the photo, I took a quick photo of it, but you could kind of imagine from the description.
Yeah, yeah, and so when, when you have them fill out the forms, also have them, um. Come with a sketch or a rendering, um, that shows what that slope would look like, what materials they're, they're going to be using. I think that's probably generally, uh, idea.
Understood by staff, you can follow up with that.
Right. Not gonna put any more windows.
Oh, is it one of those buildings? Oh, yeah, it's.
Yeah, it does, it doesn't have a whole lot of windows, and I, with all those kids in there, I want them to have windows.
It's time to keep up.
That might be, that would be.
Yeah, let me, if you give me a moment, I'll try to find the picture, because I took a useful picture for us. That was Friday, but it was not Friday.
Our days are running me out.
Well, do you all know which building it is?
Yeah, the.
Yeah, yeah. So I think we, I think we have a general sense, if you can't find the photo.
Yeah, so, there I am.
Oh, I guess it's, well.
And, so it would be, uh, my assumption is probably here or there. As you said, I need a sketch and follow up, and I think those are still pertinent questions.
Yeah.
Those windows are pretty high up.
Yeah. So, my thought is some safety concerns naturally.
Right.
And then, uh, they probably were trying to take an opportunity to do some accessibility, because they are backing up mail trucks into there.
Right, right, yeah.
Kids are probably coming in curbside for the Montessori. For the Montessori.
Yeah, I would assume they would come through the front door, but maybe this is where they imagine.
Then I can follow up with them and see exactly what it is, that's what she mentioned.
Okay.
Um, but we'll look over guidelines and and answer those questions.
Great, sounds good. Are you excited that that building is, has been purchased and is gonna go to good use?
Absolutely, it's been a long time.
Yeah.
And I know Boys and Girls Club rented it, you know, a few years ago, just for their teeny thirteen members, but.
Right, and it's right by a parks, which is great.
Yeah. Yeah. Absolutely.
All right, uh, town council liaison.
Uh, so I'll I'll ask questions.
Sure, uh, so what exactly is going on? Uh, normally, their their.
An appointment takes about a month, uh, I think we're sitting at two, three months now of. No official appointments.
Yeah, so, there has been back and forth on formulating a committee responsibilities. And guidelines document. Um, with discussions about how liaisons will be approached for not only ARB, but for planning commission.
Okay.
Um, last month, we received a draft. From Heisen with recommendations about which committees should move forward. And that would include who is on uh committees. So unfortunately, Alex is getting caught up in waiting for that committee assignment document to wrap up. And to this, and to the council to decide its direction it wants with liaisons. Um, we have a draft and we were planning as staff to present that during work session this month. And see if we can make some forward progress so we could have some good timing of an appointment over the summer. As we're trying to get the annual meeting done for the planning commission in a few months at the end of the summer, usually August.
Right.
Um, so it's been delayed, uh, I think more than a few months. Um, to to your point, but uh, we are kind of aware, I've taken notes and he has been doing good reporting back. To plant, to town council about what's occurring in planning commission, and then naturally staff always picks up any. That errant detail that gets lost in a few weeks. But, yeah, we're still waiting for them to kind of decide their committee structure and liaisons.
What will be taken to down for this work session is. Over vast with council's recommendation, so it's hopefully.
Uh, the current drafts, are they public documents? Are they still in the uh closed session?
Our whole document was published, I think it should have probably been distributed with a work session.
Okay.
Um, we had it on table, I don't know if it's on the website, and of course, it's always available uh for people to ask for.
Perfect.
As your clerk, um, that's very clear.
Could I get a copy of that? Uh, I know I'm treading off of ARB, so.
No, but I would be more than happy as a, as a Scottsville citizen, I'll.
Well, I guess, yeah, I guess as long as Alex. Continues to be the interim. Um, and continues that communication, then that's really the priority. And um. And in hopes that this happens sooner rather than later.
In in the meantime, if, you know, we're having absences or uh. Would either or both of you feel comfortable just reporting our meetings to council?
Absolutely, yeah.
Uh, because I don't know that I could commit to go into another meeting, and I know usually. Council meetings, they like to have reports on all of them, so.
So Alex has been consistent with those meetings, but in the same way with planning commission, staff will step up to report. Um, just to get communication going back and forth, and we do the same for you guys. Um, uh, the other way around.
Maybe I'll ship a van, copy the minutes.
Yeah, so, another easy thing, uh, as Carter suggested, when I get minutes, I can just CC those. Uh, and that gives you some uh. General knowledge.
Yeah.
Helps with any questions, you could follow up with me too.
Great. One of the other things, Miss May, it's going off of the agenda, but it's in line with um. The um. Not really the COA process, but just in general. We had spoken about having communication with lo- local realtors. About buyers or structures in the. In the historic district. Because often, people buy homes and don't realize that they're within historic district. And don't know that they should be going through the COA process. So that's something, just to keep in mind, that realtors should be sending letters. To new homeowners, or should really even be telling new homeowners that um. That they're within the historic district.
And we were just talking out there, I was wondering about that, do they know when they buy the home?
Right, they should know.
Could even be a clause on the date or something.
Yeah. You, I think what, what we put together previously was like a piece of paper that described. Um, you're in the historic district and and um. People always got like a pamphlet, some handout. Okay. Right, right. So there is like a, a handout that go, should go out once a year. To um all building owners, and that just gives. The guideline, it gives, you know, the process and the guidelines. Um, that should be in our documents somewhere. Um, so maybe looking into that and making sure it's still being sent out every year would be a good idea. Because I know they worked hard on that.
Okay, um, I could look through where I think most ARB materials saved. Search for that and then follow up and make sure that gets, that isn't lost as an ankle pattern. Um, I'll do some digging on my side and see how staff approached it, and it's probably just continuing that process each year.
Yeah, yeah, and maybe send out like the first year or something.
Right after the inventory.
Uh, yeah, I think that's actually, that's an awesome idea of having like an annual leaflet that goes out of like. You're in the historic district, uh, being part of our town.
So it was something like this, where it was, you know, thinking about construction?
Yeah.
You know, and then you open it up and it's, you know, what uh. Projects that require review, window replacements, exterior doors, things like that. So, that should be, I mean, there were several iterations, so that should be somewhere in the documentation. And maybe actually, if you all could look into it and um. Find the most recent document and and let's put it on our agenda for next month to review it. And talk about when to send it out. Because hopefully it hasn't been sent out in the past. When did you buy the house? So four years ago. So it hasn't been sent out in four years, but we went through at least four iterations of it in the past four years. So maybe, they did the work but never sent it out. So it seems like that's something we should review.
You can follow up with that as staff.
Okay.
Send the most recent one and then discuss it uh next meeting.
Great.
No, I know that can become a budgetary issue, because I know shipping, you know, sending them out can be expensive. Do we, what does our budget look like?
I think we could fit it in our postage for administration.
Okay.
How many homes is probably, oh, how we pull up the inventory and look at our lines, it's like one seventy or something?
Okay, really?
I have one hundred and sixty-six lines.
Cool, okay.
Minus three and maybe three or four, so one sixty.
Okay.
It's postage, which is better.
Right.
Um, I think we could be able to do it.
Okay, awesome.
Great.
Thank you for asking.
Yes, yeah, I, yeah. Budget was like my favorite thing on council, uh, yeah, keep it cheap.
Yeah.
Pizza parties, no, frozen pizza parties.
Everybody bringing their own.
Yeah, BYOB and BYO pizza.
All right, well, can I have a motion to adjourn? Second? On favor?
Aye.
All right. Great. We love the efficiency of the eating.